How are you?
Thank you for having me.
Why are you speaking?
Why are you here?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hey, honey. Another day.
Yeah. Yeah. A little behavior. Time to tell myself that I said.
Hey, how are you?
Hey.
Carrie, Miss Carrie, hi. And this is Mark.
Why does she get such an exciting warm welcome? I can hear him.
Hey, Carrie. Good.
This is Mark. They're both from New York. Carrie's here. She created.
Hi. I'm good. How are you?
She got a white award on her rap. It's like an introduction.
I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the bar.
Thank you. Good to see you, Miss.
That's the River Mary.
Good.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah, they got us. That road is a nice part of it. Especially with trucks.
Then they even little help their local manager. Their local management.
It's bad. Try to make it one thousand and fifteen. So, yeah. It's. I've done it several times. The brother.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just looking at the language.
His car comes to you. You can't see it. And, yeah. Some are going to ask.
Yeah. That's where. Sure. This is a close. Yeah, yeah. It's hotel.
Do we call them?
Horizonte. TV. There was like a seven day. Timing issue.
Do we call them that?
Not that I don't worry about.
Okay. Okay, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Morning, everyone. We ask you please rise. We open in prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene in the commissary's public meeting.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this midsummer morning where we can gather and conduct the business of the county. We're thankful for a beautiful valley that you've created that we call home. And we always appreciate the moral of your creation. Or on Monday, when we remember twenty-one loved ones from our community lost on Flight eight hundred. We'll never forget that day when we lost sixteen students and fifteen students and five adults. It started as a trip of a lifetime, ended in tragedy and total sadness. They were the sons and daughters, brothers and sisters, and mothers and fathers. All were brilliant and vibrant lives that touched so many in their short span of life. Their memories and spirits continue to live on. We ask you to continue to comfort their families, friends, and our community as we remember their precious lives each day. And we ask you to guide us this morning, and our decisions be in accordance with your will. We humbly pray these things in your name. Amen.
I declare Jesus Christ alive in the United States of America and to the republic through which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice, and all other. We will convene our commissary's public meeting at this time and ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And public comment on agenda items only at this time? Any online?
None.
Okay. Move on to the next item. Director.
All right, uh, Carrie Eakins, Drums Alive.
Morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
If you could just come up and, you know, tell us why you're here and up at the podium here.
All right.
It's an honor to have you here in our county.
Thank you.
It's an exciting, uh... And Diana?
No, I'm over here.
Is it ready for me?
Yes.
To talk.
Go ahead.
First of all, welcome, everybody. I'm so excited to be here. It's been a little bit nervous for me to be here. I get nervous and then I'm afraid to talk. So, I'll do my best. I live, actually, I was born in America, in California, and raised in Utah. And I taught at the universities in the United States, and then I moved to Germany. And now I live in Germany, and I live in Augsburg. It's by Munich, so I'll give you a little trick here. Hello, my name is Carrie Eakins, and I'm freudnissrisikmeseig dass ich bin zurück hier in Amerika. So, I just said I'm really excited to be here in America again. And I'm here because I created a program. It's called Drums Alive. And I'll tell you a short story about it. So, what happened is when I had my second hip replacement, which now I have four hip replacements, I was left in a wheelchair and I couldn't walk. And my doctor said to me, hey, Carrie, you've got two hands and you've got two arms. Make something out of it. And that's what happened. So, sitting on a chair, starting to drum, and feeling the power and the energy and the euphoric feeling I felt was happening, and I wondered what in the heck is going on? So, I started researching, and I could only find the research about drumming fitness and why it's so important. But I found it in the music industry. And then I started researching, and I was totally amazed of what happens to the brain when you drum. So, that combination of using drumming, music, rhythm, cognitive applications, putting them all together, was my goal, to have a brain program. And Drums Alive, you think it's just a fitness program. It's absolutely not. It was developed in a brain training program. And so, from that, we have been all over the world, lucky enough, and been with many amazing, incredible people, as you see. They're such a big heart to me, and I'm so glad to have been here and had the chance to see all of you, because the power is within you and what we do. My mother taught for diversibilities. I was raised with diverse abilities, and that is why in Drums Alive, that's one of our parts, is diverse abilities for everybody, for all people, for all ages, and for all disabilities. And that was my goal, to have Drums Alive, not to be just a fitness program, but to be something to help others. So, that's my story.
And tomorrow you'll be at the YMCA in Williamsport with our superstars.
Yeah.
Diana, how many superstars are there now, group?
We started out with five or six. Now, we have well over a hundred in all.
Wow.
And tomorrow, we expect, by the count today, close to seventy drumming with her in the gym. And each one will get to meet her. They're gonna come into a couple of cool songs, and actually, each one, I want them, her to meet them, and the faces of those that have been, quality of life has been improved through Drums Alive, through what Carrie has created.
Yeah. And she says, just not a physical. It's social. It's, you know, a network. It's, many of these individuals, it's, they develop friendships.
Yes.
And they've come out of the cocoon and turned into butterflies.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we, when we flew to Rhode Island to train with Carrie, when we met her, we knew then it was like, okay, we're just gonna, we already had started it, but it is really, it's the Drums Alive that has helped it to take off.
So, you actually went to Rhode Island under the auspices of the YMCA, right?
Yes.
Right? So, for the community to understand sort of how things happen, this wonderful woman from Germany, Diana and her daughter Amber and your other daughter sort of get wind of this, the Y says, okay, we will help put it together initially, sent them to Rhode Island, so this, so the public understands the importance of organizations like the Y. Diana and Amber were then able to take it from one Y to the other. They came to the commissioners and said, listen, we need some funding. And the commissioners, who sit as the joiner board, which gets funding for MHID, intellectual disabilities, as well as mental health, we were able to get it funded. So, especially for new commissioners who come in, we hope that they will understand and recognize the importance of programs like this to engage everyone in the community. And one of the great things about it is that, as you said, it is a diversibility. There are all types of folks at the Y participating. I actually didn't understand the brain part of it until you explained it now, and I'm glad you did. And I think that I had thought it was more on the fitness side, but we got letters from parents who said, you know, my son or daughter never would go out of the house, came down to this event, and absolutely love it. And so, that's fantastic. We thank you too. I know we thank you for coming up with the idea, but we thank you guys for really putting the energy into getting trained and making a point of going around and educating us about it and getting us, we went out to the Y, we participated in it, and we, yeah.
Thank the Y for having the vision to get behind it.
Right, absolutely.
Right. I thank the Y because they have been supportive from day one. They not only like the idea, but that it should be, they're no cost.
Right.
And that is huge, especially those out during the day and day programs, but no cost is huge because they're looking for things to do. So, the Y has been huge in the fact that they've supported us from day one and through tomorrow. We're hoping we're getting fifteen more, fourteen, fifteen more instructors, including us getting recertified Saturday at EL, but hopefully to take it to Jersey Shore and Lock Haven. And also, it is right now in Bradford. So, the hope is to take it out. We have a team coming for Hershey.
Wow.
That I met Jeff at Little League World Series twenty years ago when I ushered there, and he and his wife, and they came and they saw it when they were here for Little League. They got certified online, took it there. Their team is coming here tomorrow to be a part of the event at Williamsport, which is great. I think it also shows the collaboration of the Y.
You should come up, because this is being livestreamed, Diana. Come up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Come up, because it's important for the public to understand and get educated about these things.
People from what state college are driving down to Williamsport?
Right. It shows the collaboration of the Y. We are working with, well, we work with the county commissioners together. Hope, Rob Labusch is gonna be there tomorrow. Keith Wagner is gonna come. And hopefully, the Clinton County Commissioners, because they want the program there. So, they have been invited, as well as the IU seventeen, and that's how it originally was birthed, because they invited me to do something for summer school, a music program. And I went in and I saw the individuals move, and I thought, why don't we have anything? And I should know that, having Amber as my daughter. And I came back and they loved the idea. But I started out with typical group fitness stuff, and that kind of got boring. It wasn't until the Y sent me to Sunbury, got certified in Drums Alive. And then I brought that back. They said, you wanna start this? And so, there, there we went to Rhode Island. Then we also participated with Carrie in Boston National Shake Convention. We, all three of us, Amber, Erica, and I flew into Boston to help with that. That was a blast. That was a blast, even though it was winter and it was like three feet snow.
And we were always wet.
And we were always wet. Okay. But anyway, so, and since then, we have, Heather Ack has gotten certified. She's a part of our team. We have another Y member who's gonna step up, Julie, and she is gonna get certified. So, we're hoping to expand the program even more, and particularly to other Ys. So, that's our hope. But I think it shows the collaboration, and we're all working together, and if we work together, and things, things can change and get better for these individuals, and that's what we're seeing. So, we thank you.
Yeah.
Because without you, you know, your support, getting us through another year as we expanded it, that might not have happened.
And the amount of money that, actually, we initially used some, well, no, we actually, the money is money that came from the state for MHID, but obviously, the commissioners have the authority to direct it.
Yeah, we smacked thirteen ways, too.
Yeah, well, I think we got reimbursed. Oh, maybe we didn't. The first year, we might have used Act thirteen, but we hope, which was a nominal amount of money. I think it was what?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, right? But it really enabled the Y to train people to expand the program.
And socials, dances, a night at the Cross Cutter Field.
Yes.
Hope for Fridays night, we're up there with Hope. And that's, that's a huge night, and that's no cost to the parents or the individual to get them more into the community.
So, if someone wants to show up tomorrow, they welcome?
Absolutely.
So, it's at eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
At the Williamsport Y.
Yes.
And if you're not doing anything, I'm telling you, we were there last October.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
It is. And they were very excited to meet Carrie, and Carrie's very excited to meet them. So, Carrie will be drumming, but our RVR instructors will also be leading a song to help her out, so she can get around to all the individuals. And it's, it's gonna be pretty cool. And from Penn College, Dawn Dickey's coming. We've collaborated with her, and she is gonna do, sign the cooldown song. She's a staff, so we wanted that community to be represented too, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for traveling all the way from Germany.
I'm very excited, so I hope some of you can come and see what happens, because the words are transformative power of drumming, of music, of rhythm, of cognitive applications. That is what changes for everybody, for all ages, and for all abilities.
And Carrie, it is changing lives.
Thank you.
It is. It's so awesome to watch.
It's very humbling.
Yes.
And I'm trying to not do the tear thing. But thank you so much, and I appreciate you all, because it's your support, and it's your support that helps everybody. And without that support, it's a sad story. So, you guys are very lucky to have such a wonderful, wonderful team. Thank you.
See you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports. Kalen.
Kalen, sorry to follow up on that.
Yeah. Here to talk finance, please.
Talk about spending money.
I know, what enough to call up.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I have three separate things to ratify here. I will start with ratification of invoices that is due through July nineteenth of 2023, paid on July twelfth, 2023, in the amount of one million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars and three cents. The breakdown is as follows, with sixty-one point nine four percent being funded by the general fund at eight hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Seventeen point twelve percent is being funded by grants and other sources at two hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Twenty point nine one percent is being funded by RMS at two hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. And zero point zero three percent is being funded by escrow at four hundred and nine dollars.
Okay.
So, some of the big items for the public is, we have our, print's kind of small, children and youth, four hundred and fifty-six thousand.
I was gonna, I actually have that noted. I wanted to make special note that of that eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty, over half of it, so four hundred and sixty-six thousand and five hundred and thirty dollars, went to two things with Lakeview County Children and Youth, one which was our county match payment, and the other which was trauma training for foster parents. And that was together in that big payment.
Great. Thank you. Okay, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Carrie.
And next, I have presented for your ratification is the five million dollar wire transfer loan to Farmvest, excuse me, Fanvest, XII Lakeview Mall LLC, to be paid on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-third. This is temporarily funded a hundred percent through the general fund, and that's until the ARPA CD matures, which should be sometime this week.
Okay. There was about a week difference between the CD maturing.
No. Yeah.
Right.
The, uh, the ARPA funds were tied up in a certificate of deposit, which matures, I believe, this week, and then as soon as it matures, we'll replenish the general fund with the.
Okay, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Carrie.
And last but not least, is ratification of jury panel number fourteen, to be paid on July seventh, 2023, in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. This is funded one hundred percent through the general fund.
Okay, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kalen.
All right, moving on to personnel actions. Jessica.
Morning, Jessica.
Good morning. All right. Seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of background checks and other employment conditions. For DPS, we have Paula Remisch, EMS Regional Training Coordinator, hired as a full-time replacement at thirty-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars per year, anticipated to start on July thirty-first. For the Pre-Release Center, Chris Hess, hired as a resident supervisor, one, full-time replacement at eighteen-ten per hour, anticipated to start on July seventeenth. For Facilities Management, Dominic Bracy, Maintenance Two, full-time replacement, hired at twenty-one dollars per hour, anticipated to start on July twenty-fourth. And then for Facilities Management, Chris Paul Hamus, hired as a Maintenance Two, full-time replacement at twenty-two forty per hour, anticipated to start on August fourteenth.
Okay, you have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, moving on to action items. I'm gonna take care of mine as well.
Okay.
Four point one, seeking your approval on the collective bargaining agreement with the Lakeview County Probation Officers and Domestic Relation Officers Association. This is a 2023 budgeted item, five-year contract. We finally got it signed off by both sides.
Okay, good news. Yeah, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Carrie.
All right, commissioners, moving on to action items. I'm gonna take care of mine as well.
Okay.
Four point one, seeking your approval on the collective bargaining agreement with E-Force, in the amount of two hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars. This will be funded through ARPA, and this is the county purchasing a countywide record management system for all of our local law enforcement agencies and our county agencies. And everybody's gonna be on the same system and be able to share down.
So, we have allocated a million dollars of the ARPA monies to go to public safety, and this would come out under that line item of the ARPA monies for public safety.
Correct.
Commissioner Maser and I went to a presentation. Commissioner Maribito, you weren't available that day.
Right.
And we were very impressed with making it unified across the county.
Yeah, I was, under the records management systems, you have individual departments throughout the county, and I was quite surprised that departments weren't on board to change the system, because maybe ten years ago, or eight years ago.
Eight years ago.
Yeah. You first came in, we were, we were trying to urge everyone to, to come on board with the system spillings.
Right.
That the city took on. And the value of a records management system is priceless. And what's important about it is that it tracks about everything, and it can inform the officers, high crime areas, consistent crime areas. It can communicate with other departments in real time, whereas before these, and nobody wanted to change because they were so used to their own systems. And now spillings just, you know, got, I don't know, maybe too successful and didn't live up to their, their deal. So, this E-Force, when Scott and I, and we shared it with Commissioner Maribito, their program was, it's an incredible program, and it's one that will always be serviced. They can, can build from that service and add additional services in the future. This system can save lives.
How hack-proof is it?
Pardon?
How hack-proof is it?
Hack-proof?
Yes.
If they can hack into our federal government, I guess they could hack into any.
Just was wondering.
But it is.
It's not, it's not like.
The important thing about this is it gives one department, another department's information real time.
Yeah.
And that can save a life. It can save an officer's life. It can save a lot of people's lives, like, because, like, having that information before, you know, you don't have the individual silos and having to contact the department, that officer's not in, you have to wait for that officer, get back to that officer. This way, they get the information real time.
Plus, plus, this company will train our insight, too.
Right. I think it's important to note that this is the full start-up cost. So, this puts the system in, in all the cars, the police stations, and it provides the training. And then after that, each department takes care of its annual maintenance and licensing.
And they all agreed, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
They've all agreed to maintain their own.
Right. They'll maintain. But eight years ago, when we, when we were trying to do something, it was sort of shocking to me that a crime could be committed in Williamsport, and they didn't have, other than some radio contact, down in Muncie, they wouldn't necessarily know that this person was involved in this. And, and as Commissioner Maser said, people, it was difficult because of where people were at, but Commissioner Maser and I were at an LEA meeting, and they sort of all agreed that they would come on board, and, and I'm glad that you guys were able to go to that. The, the, sort of just a synopsis, this, you know, the, the old way of doing things was sort of the uniform crime reporting, where it was very summary. This uses what's called the National Incident-Based Reporting System, which is a very comprehensive, twenty-four crime categories, and it's actually, it's actually kind of interesting, under the old UCR system, rape was only applying to females. Under the new system...
Then that was together in that big payment.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers are?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
And next I have presented for your ratification is the five million dollar wire transfer loan to FarmVest, FarmVest, excuse me, FanVest, XII Lycoming Mall LLC, to be paid on June 22nd, 2023. This is temporarily funded 100% through the general fund and that's until the ARPA CD matures, which should be sometime this week.
Okay. There was about a week difference between the CD maturing. It should be.
No. Yeah.
We already transferred it to come back into the general.
Right.
Yes.
The, uh, the ARPA funds were tied up in a certificate of deposit.
Yeah.
Which matures, I believe, this week and then as soon as it matures, we'll replenish the general fund with the.
Okay, no motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
And last but not least is ratification of jury panel number 14, to be paid on July 7th, 2023, in the amount of $5,642. This is funded 100% through the general fund.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers are?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
All right, moving on to personnel actions. Jessica.
Morning, Jessica.
Good morning. All right, seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of background checks and other employment conditions. For DPS, we have Paula Remish, EMS Regional Training Coordinator, hired as a full-time replacement at $36,504 per year, anticipated to start on July 31st. For the pre-release center, Chris Hess, hired as a resident supervisor one, full-time replacement at 1810 per hour, anticipated to start on July 17th. For facilities management, Dominic Bracy, maintenance two, full-time replacement, hired at $21 per hour, anticipated to start on July 24th. And then for facilities management, Chris Paul Hamus, hired as a maintenance two, full-time replacement at 2240 per hour, anticipated to start on August 14th.
Okay, no motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers are?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, moving on to action items. I'm going to take care of my as well.
Okay.
4.1, seeking your approval on the collective bargaining agreement with the Lycoming County probation officers and Domestic Relation Officers Association. This is a 2023 budgeted item, five-year contract. We finally got it signed off by both sides.
Okay, good news. Yeah, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers are?
Well, can I make a comment?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I think that the, the collective bargaining agreement, I think, is really fair to both sides, fair to the employees and fair to the taxpayers. It lays out a path of 3% wage increases for the next basically five years. Well, this year, 24, 25, 26, and it's retro on 22. It, it also dealt with problems affecting, or associated with recruitment. We tried to do some work to make sure that we, we can get and recruit people. We were able to hold the line on the on-call pay, which will remain the same, but at the same time is fair to them. It gives them something for, for being on-call, for holding that, that beeper or that.
Phone.
Phone. Yeah.
You're on-call 24 hours for the entire week?
Right, for the entire week. But it also holds the line on that, so, for five years. So, overall, I think, and it, and, and there was some other minor increases there on clothing and so forth. But overall, I think that, that it does, it does justice to the taxpayers and it does justice to the workers who, who are out there putting themselves on the line. So I think that the, it's fair to say, I think the three of us feel pretty good about the, and I hope that the union likewise. They ratified it.
Yeah. Okay, all papers are?
Aye.
Aye. So carry, thank you.
All right, Commissioner, seeking your approval on the price, the price quote and agreement with E-Force in the amount of $244,842. This will be funded through ARPA and this is the county purchasing a countywide record management system for all of our local law enforcement agencies and our county agencies and everybody's going to be on the same system and be able to share down.
So we have allocated a million dollars of the ARPA monies to go to public safety and this would come out under that line item of the ARPA monies for public safety.
Correct.
Commissioner Maser and I went to a presentation. Commissioner Maribito, he weren't available that day.
Right.
And we were very impressed with making it unified across the county.
Yeah, I was, under the records management systems, you have individual departments throughout the county and I was quite surprised that departments weren't on board to change the system because maybe 10 years ago or.
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago when you first, yeah, you first came in, we were, we were trying to urge everyone to, to come on board with the, the system spillings.
Right.
Uh, that the, the city took on and the value of a records management system is priceless. And what's important about it is that it tracks about everything and it can inform the, the officers, high crime areas, consistent crime areas. It can communicate with other departments in real time, whereas before these, and nobody wanted to change because they were so used to their own systems. And now spillments just, you know, got, I don't know, maybe too successful and, and didn't live up to their, their deal. So this E-Force, when Scott and I, and we shared it with Commissioner Maribito, their program was, it's an incredible program and it's one that will always be serviced. They can, can build from that service and add additional services in the future. This system can save lives.
How hack-proof is it?
Pardon?
How hack-proof is it?
Hack-proof?
Yes.
Uh, if they can hack into our, our, our federal government, I guess they could hack into any.
Just was wondering.
But it is.
It's not, it's not like.
The important thing about this is it, it gives one department, another department's information real time.
Yeah.
And, and that can save a life. It can save an officer's life. It can save a lot of people's lives by, because, like, having that information before, you know, you don't have the individual silos and having to contact the department, that officer's not in, you have to wait for that officer, get back to that officer. This way they get the information real time.
Plus, plus this company will train our insight, too.
Right, I think it's important to note that this is the, the full start-up cost. So this puts the system in, in all the cars, the police stations, and it provides the training. And then after that, each department takes care of its annual maintenance and licensing.
And they all, all agreed, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
They've all agreed to maintain their own.
Right, they'll maintain. But eight years ago, when we, when we were trying to do something, it was sort of shocking to me that a crime could be committed in Williamsport and they didn't have, other than some radio contact, down in Muncie, they wouldn't necessarily know that this person was involved in this. And, and as Commissioner Maser said, people, it was difficult because of where people were at, but, but Commissioner Maser and I were at an LEA meeting and they sort of all agreed that they would come on board and, and I'm glad that you guys were able to go to that. The, the, sort of just a synopsis, this, you know, the, the old way of doing things was sort of the uniform crime reporting where it was very summary. This uses what's called the National Incident-Based Reporting System, which is a very comprehensive, 24 crime categories. And it's actually, it's actually kind of interesting, under the old UCR system, rape was only applying to females. Under the new system, of course, rape includes, you know, assault, sexual assaults on a male, which was not in the old system. But what it does do is it allows law enforcement to use a uniform way of on a countywide. And, and so the price includes the upfront cost for the Lycoming Regional Police, Lycoming County Sheriff's Office, South Williamsport Police Department, Montoursville Police Department, Muncie Police Department, Yewsville Police Department, and the Lycoming District Attorneys Detectives. And it, and then, as you mentioned, they will pay to maintain it. I think it's a nominal amount of $4,000 a year or something. So, it is good news. I hope that the citizens of the county recognize that commissioners are taking ARPA funds and trying to make the place a safer community.
Again, it's a generational type thing.
Right, absolutely.
And this is, this is a program that I'm certain the county commissioners would have funded with general fund money as well.
Absolutely.
It, it's, it's that important.
Yeah. Okay. You know, it's, it's one of the nice things about being a commissioner when you can do something like this because you can actually see real change being made. You're not going through Congress, you're not going through, of course, we, it helps that they also sent us the money. But we don't have to put it to a vote in Harrisburg and then go to the Senate and get the governor to sign it. We can do it.
That's a challenging event these days, these days.
You know, the sheriff, the sheriff sent us an email last week or the week before on, on the dangers of law enforcement. And just the examples he, he listed in, in that email was enough to say, wow, you know, you, you don't think it's happening in our communities. Well, it is and, you know, lives are at stake. And, you know, Commissioner Metzger, we pray for our law enforcement all the time. And every day they get up, they may not come home to their family, you know, like, like for everyone possibly, but serving, serving their communities and anything we can do to help them.
And, and part of it is our responsibility to make sure that people have the training and we have the funds available for training and for tools like this so that they can stay safe.
No motion?
Um, I think we had.
We didn't.
We didn't?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers are?
Aye.
So carry.
Commissioner, seeking your approval on the agreement with DNA diagnostics. This is a 2023 budgeted item. This is DNA correction, genetics testing that domestic relations utilize as when required.
It is a budgeted item, so I have motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers are?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
4.4, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Director.
Morning.
Commissioners, for your approval is the purchase of a 2024 D8 dozer from Cleveland Brothers in the amount of $755,730. This is a, as you know, a pre-programmed, a 2024 budgeted item. Unfortunately, we are 26 to 30 weeks out of would-be delivery, which would put us into 2024 and ultimately would put our other D8 that we currently have would be traded, would put us out of the buyback rotation. So we have that other dozer, the last D8 that we purchased, that's going to be up for the buyback, but if we don't move forward now, we won't be able to get it in time and we'll lose in the buyback program. So, this is before you, as, as normally this is part of that program when we do with our heavy equipment, how we spread it out through the years. So, and this is covered through the money we set back per ton for our waste.
What year's the old one?
Eight 2021, 2020, yeah. It's usually two, we're running on a two-year, we're trading in, yeah, 2021, dozer 27, yes.
And you're trading in, what, every three years?
Yeah. And the problem, again, if there was no lead time issue, if manufacturing in America had caught up, like, it used to be, there would be a different story. But with the, the lead times on everything, this will put us into, if we wait till January, then it puts us into July or August.
Those, those dozers are used all day, every day?
Every day, in the working phase. It pushes the waste from the trucks into the location to get it pushed in.
So it'll be delivered in the 2024 budget year for which it is a budgeted item?
Yes, sir.
Right. We're just jumping ahead so that we don't wait until January to.
Yeah, trying to get a slot in the production. That's the, and that goes with trucks, equipment, whatever. You, you're trying to get a, a slot in a production line and when they tell you, whether it's a truck or a piece of equipment, they tell you, well, the factory's going to open up production slots and there's a window of three or four days. Now, in this particular issue, this item, Cleveland Brothers is able to get slots in the production. But so often we hear, if we want to buy a truck or something, well, they'll have a, a line, a slot open for only a couple of days and it makes it rather difficult for supply chains.
What do they require you to put down when you reserve?
Nothing, no. So they just. It'll all be paid out through in 2024.
Right, okay.
No motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any other questions for the Director?
No, how, how are things at the landfill, Mr. Director?
Busy, very busy. Leachate tank is being, having water pumped in it for full-depth tests. The closure for, yeah, the closure program is going well for the 22 acres we're trying to get closed off. Mother Nature could do a little better at not raining every day, but.
Going to make up for June.
Yeah, well, and we are still trying to, we'll get that 12 acres of dirt screened and out of the place up above Digger so that lot will be open for next year.
So you ever hear the expression, July, what is it, July showers bring August flowers?
Yeah.
Wow.
I like May. May was, I know May was hard on the farmers.
April showers bring May flowers.
Right. May was hard on the farmers, but it was off the.
Bring up the cap.
The 22 acres?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, we just need, it's, it's coming along. It's just, we need to cap some dry weather. I took pictures, I was out on it last night, well, not last night, 3:30, in the backdrop of the very dark clouds behind the crew, the Halton, Halton crew trying to get the liner welded, they were scrambling.
So, the leachate tank problem started in 2013?
The construction completion was supposed to be 2013.
Right.
So, yes.
But 10 years.
Yes. Well, we are, we are, we are at a time and place that, it's been a long time coming, has a knock, Director. We are doing real well. And like I said, it'll take a week to fill the tank up for full depth and we'll let it set static and then we'll look if there's any detection issues or leaks. But given the testing and procedures they went through to put that secondary liner system in this time, it's, I think we're going to be on a.
It will prevent us from having to truck out the leachate.
It'll give us, yes, in these, these high capacities, like right now, I'm at, I think I'm at 53% this morning and I'm trucking leachate. It'll give us those, the ability of the capacity.
You can't.
Plus, the closure part also takes away some of the liability.
Is it still, you can't be more than 25%?
Yeah, they don't want you in a 30-day period.
Correct.
But as you close sections of landfill, that part of the formula comes off of that. You know, we, we've never really done much closure work. That's why we're trying to get the old sections closed off so it doesn't generate that additional leachate. So we're going at it to, at both ends, production in and getting out.
So for the public to understand, the leachate's been trucked out year after year, which has been a stickling point with me and which I've had a hard time digesting that. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars each year to truck that out.
Yes.
And we'll have.
And that's on top of, sir, that's on top of the two force mains that we've pumped leachate into pipes underground to the sewer plants that we have.
Yeah.
So.
So I'll prevent that for the future. Carry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers are?
Aye.
Aye. So carry, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Coman.
You know, we had Diane and Amber in here and we're talking about diversity, diversibilities. And I live over in South Williamsport and we have a, a young man that is autistic, never, never says a word, never heard him say one word. If, and he walks every day, sometimes he runs. And if you go by him, you can wave hello and he probably won't acknowledge that you're there. Okay, I've gotten two acknowledgements in the past 10 years, but two nights ago, there was a kitten that had litter, a litter, and the, the owner is just not being responsible. And now these kittens are out in the yard all night, all day. They were starving and we decided, well, this is not good. We got to find them a home. Nobody wanted and so we decided we'd put food out on the sidewalk. There were seven of them and they're being fed and, and we're thinking, jeez, now this would be the time to, to gather them all up, right? And get them. And we thought, well, we won't do that until they're done eating. Well, you couldn't catch them. It was, it's really difficult to catch them then. He comes walking down the street and he's looking at these kittens and we caught one, we had a glove arm, you know, we caught one. And we couldn't catch them, they were fast. He comes right down and that cat stood right there for him and he picked it up and he says, and he talked. He says, what are you doing with the kittens, right? And he's petting that cat. It was incredible. What a breakthrough. So whether it be drums or whether it be kittens, right, there's always something that can stimulate a person, right, and, and, and bring out something in.
That's.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
So this past Monday, we got an opportunity to meet with ICE up at the facility on Reach Road. Commissioner Maser and I were there. Commissioner Maribito had an emergency so he cannot attend. Representative Hamm was there, Representative Flick was there, the mayor was there and representatives from Senator Yaw's office were there. They did a presentation for us and a tour. There is 20 employees, up to 20 employees that are employed by that facility. The facility is not open yet. It is not a detention center. It is a processing center. And what they do is they process the worst of the worst. The criminals, there are little illegal immigrants that have warrants for them. They go after, they will take them to that facility, they will process them, they can only hold them there for 12 hours, up to 12 hours, and then they're taken to one of three facilities, which is Center County, which is an old BOP. I think it has 1,800 beds and I think right now they said they had 1100 or 1200 there, Clinton County and Pike County. When someone is then done exhausting their, their hearings in front of the judges and when they're deported, they're flown out of Harrisburg, Newark, or Newark, New York. They're not flown out of this airport at all. No one's coming into this airport. They know, no buses coming in here. They have no knowledge of any of that. This is a process. It's not a detention center. We saw the cells. There's no way that anyone can live in those cells, sleep in those cells. They're, they're of concrete. It's obviously for a very short processing time until they're taken to a, a local facility. And those three facilities, they gave us Clinton County's, the BOP old center in, in Center County and Pike County.
What was interesting and a little alarming is what they do with these people. So they, they commit serious crimes. As a matter of fact, it was unbelievable how many MS-13 we have in Lewisburg. And, and they're the worst of the worst.
The penitentiary.
The penitentiary.
Yeah.
And they're the worst of the worst. And so when we're looking to deport those people, we have to call the country of origin and have them accept them back. If they don't accept them, we can't deport them. This needs to change. I don't know how, okay, or we need to do something, okay? But then if they serve their time, they're left out on the street into the community, into the community in which they, they're at. That's not acceptable. Not, not in my opinion. And I don't know whether it's international law, because they did talk a lot, a lot about laws, okay, or our law, but it's something that is alarming. And what did they have? They had 72,000 deportations in 2022. They had 160-something thousand in 2020. It, it was a lot, but they're going down. The trend was going down and then the last 2020, 2021 to 2022, it did go up.
Right.
A little bit, so.
There's no buses that are coming here from the southern border. This is not a processing center for those type of individuals that are crossing the border. It's nothing of that. This is strictly people that have been convicted of a crime, where they have a warrant and they go after, and they detain them. Again, this is the processing center and it isn't even open yet for the processing center. They're not to that point yet. So there hasn't even been one person processed through their facility. But they showed us everything. It used to be at Allenwood and now it's, you know, they had no room over there. They had a boardroom over there. They had to, to have a meeting. They had to schedule it months out. Now they have their own boardroom. They have their own fitness facility for this, for the ICE agents because obviously they have to be in good shape physically.
Remember in Allenwood, you said they had one bath, one toilet for 20 officers?
Yeah, yeah. They have bathrooms now. They have cubicles. There's three supervisor offices, I believe. There might have been four. I think there was three. And an ammunition room. There was a room where they can clean their weapons separate from the ammunition room. And, but they were very transparent, very agreeable to everything. But they say, we live in this community. We're from this community. We live here. So we would like the rumors to stop too. We're going after the bad guys. When we get warrants and we find out they're, they're nearby, they, they picked up one in Harrisburg, an Interpol warrant, international warrant. They picked him up in Harrisburg the other day and obviously he's in the Harrisburg, I think he's in Dolphin County prison somewhere down around there. So they, they cover a large area. They cover West Virginia. They cover Delaware and Pennsylvania. They do have issues around Philadelphia area. Some of the county prisons down there refuse to take their warrants. Some of the counties down there, they're trying to work those issues out. But everyone else in the state has, has cooperated with them.
I, I'd like to personally thank Steve for setting the meeting up again, because he set the one up in Allenwood. And the transparency of, of everyone.
We.
Oh, Steve, we, right. And the mayor was there.
Mayor was there.
Yep, yes.
Yeah. And all, and both state representatives, the, plus Senator Yaw's office was represented. A lot of questions and they answered them all.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think one of the, the biggest takeaways from, from that visit was that this is a side of Homeland Security that folks don't really know about. And it would be well worth everybody to look up what their mission is and understand it because this is just one portion of it and it is not the border, Customs and Border Patrol.
Right.
This is how do we get rid of folks that shouldn't be here?
Yes. These are people that commit serious crimes.
Yeah.
And this is, their budget has not increased in, what'd they say, 10 years?
Yeah.
I mean, not at all.
And, yeah, they have 6,000 agents nationwide compared to their two departments that have about 40,000 employees. So they have a very limited budget, very limited staff. So what they, what they do is go after the bad guys. We asked them point-blank, are you aware of any buses coming from the border? The only thing they knew was of someone down around Philadelphia. They had not heard of any around this area or seen any of them around this area.
So just, let me explain, maybe you can explain one thing that people have asked me. So let's say they pick someone up in West Virginia. They have an outstanding warrant. The person is accused of a violent crime. Now, they're accused of the crime, right? They haven't been to court yet.
Correct.
Okay. So they bring them to the processing center here.
No, they would bring them one closer.
Well, okay, they would bring, that's the question people ask. So the people coming So the people coming here are people who are...
In the regional area.
In this regional area, right. So they're not taking them from West Virginia here?
No.
Okay, that's, it was a little confusing.
Yeah, they would take them to a closer processing center.
Right, down there. This, so this is someone they pick up?
There's six in Pennsylvania, I think.
What?
Processing centers.
Processing.
They showed us the map.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think there were six, the processing centers.
I remember there was like twenty-eight field offices nationwide with some restrictions.
And it makes sense that it's here, because this is the capital, I mean, the county seat, right? I mean, you're not going to put a processing center in Bradford, right in the middle of...
It's federal court.
Right, there's a federal court here. There is a local federal detention center in Allenwood and Lewisburg, right? So it makes sense. And so they bring them here, they go through the paperwork, they make sure they have the correct person, find out whether the person is really somebody else using a different name. They probably run fingerprints or whatever else they can run to try to, and then they then determine, okay, may, do they, do they determine then whether the person can go straight for deportation, or do they determine whether the person goes to Allenwood or goes to...
Well, this is only a place that can hold them up to twelve hours.
Right. So then they have to move them somewhere.
Yeah. If you saw the cells, it's all concrete.
Right.
Even the bench, I don't want to say bench, it was, it was all concrete.
They can deport them on commercial flights. They have their own airplanes.
Yeah.
And the large ones.
They even had their own concrete plants set up to make concrete, I wonder what they were doing, when they were doing the inside of that, if you remember rightly.
Really? So, okay. All right. Well, that's good. That puts those rumors to rest.
Okay. Anything else?
Public comment?
Public comment? We asked, you called a public comment that you would keep it limited to county issues.
I know what you, I know what your request is, Scott, but I just want to go back on one thing to address Mr. Hauser, and then I'll get down to business. My relatives on both sides are German, who come into this country without papers. How many people in the United States, their relatives, come here without papers and got in? And what the white people did, bringing in slaves from Africa, Chinese labor to build our railroads in the West in the hundreds, and that, and what was done to the American Indians. We're actually the trespassers, not, you know, in some ways. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And that was a direct response to Mr. Hauser. The program that would be for five million dollars here that was talked about to put up for the, for twenty million. I believe Rick said there were three zones in the airport that were eligible for that.
I think, are we talking about the same thing?
Arc Terrors.
He's talking about Arc Terrors.
Oh, okay.
The five million collectively would be running a...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
He was thinking the...
Today.
The mall.
No, that's the mall. He's talking about Arc Terrors.
Arc Terrors, yeah. We asked for input from the public.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, where are the three, as long as that and everything else, I've not seen it, where are, where are these three areas that you're designated at in the Windspore area?
New Barrett. Yeah, and then down around here, and it goes, I don't want to quote exactly, but if you go to Google and you put in federal opportunity zone, there's a map. I'll try to see if I can pull it up.
The other question I have is, I know the Chamber of Commerce has said that they will kick in a million in a quarter too.
John, could you speak up a little bit? Thank you.
Okay. I know it said that the Chamber, is that fine? That the Chamber of Commerce is going to kick in a quarter, a million in a quarter themselves.
May.
May, okay, all right, all right. We'll put it May. But I'd like to know how much tax money would be, hotel tax money would be involved in that, because we've seen the Chamber of Commerce invest in some land, which was Susquehanna Supply for a million dollars to Paul Fields. And where has that gone? No place. Am I correct?
Still in the works.
Well, yeah.
They're still working on.
So there's actually no hotel tax money that they're using. They have money from the Industrial Properties Corp. When they had, they had ownership of certain land that they sold, and that money went into a fund that is former, it's industrial property zone. Oh, he's got the map, Scott, I'll check.
Here. Can you peek around there? John, see it?
Okay.
You could describe it. It wouldn't hurt.
Say what areas they are, Matt, please.
I'll... Yeah, so it's from pretty much the Beltway, two-twenty, up to Fourth, Reach Road area, beyond Reach Road, and then Second Street to Rural Ave, between Third Ave and Hepburn, and then fifteen from Hepburn over to Catherine.
Almost to Irving Avenue.
Yeah.
And the lines up there.
It kind of goes below Lycoming College and then up to, what's that?
Thank you. Ah, I'm just serious here with, it seems with all, with the development down at the mall being bought and, and all that, and what's going on here in Windspore with some possible stuff, it just seems to me, and I've said it before, that the western and the northern ends of this county are ignored, basically, as far as I'm concerned, anything west of Windspore. Windspore is the county seat, but for an order to, all of Lycoming County to prosper, you don't want, it has to be the whole county as a whole. And you people have invested, you know, five million dollars in the mall down there with it. And this question, I know you weren't going to have any answer for. There have been five, five suits brought against the county concerning the 2020 election, plus the lawsuit that the county's involved with, Krista Rogers. Does there be any money, any figure given to what the total for legal fees is for the whole ball axe?
I don't, I don't know that number.
Maybe we don't know that number of thumper that we can get.
I would put, I think that probably means, I, five of these suits were brought against the county in the first place. I will emphasize that. Scott, you had mentioned that there were going to be some build, or developments, one taking place in Royal Sock and another one in Newsville, am I correct?
We're considering proposals for our program that we did with the Housing Initiative program, and these are two of the projects that we're looking at for the developers. Planning brought us the applications.
My last one, I'll point it out. With the wage increases that were brought, voted last, this year to go through 2027, the county commissioners are getting paid about seventy thousand, seventy-eight thousand dollars each, and that will, if I'm correct, will go to ninety thousand plus benefits. Can those, that particular increase in wages, better than two thousand a year, two thousand dollars a year be defended? I'll sit down. None of the three would like to comment on that one?
Well, I'll, I'll come on the, on the last one. So actually, the county commissioner's salary now, I think, is, is it seventy-nine? Seventy-nine. Okay, so we, we send the elected row officer salaries for the term after we're in office, so that we're not in office when we're setting it. And so that's why we set the, this is by law. By law, we set all the row officer salaries. So we did that this year, and we looked at what we thought the level of responsibility was and the ability to attract people so that it isn't the only people running for the commissioner office are people who can independently run for without regard to income. I mean, in other words, it should be a fair enough income in relation to the level of responsibility. And we set it at, I think, eighty, and we use the, we use the three percent figure.
We initially went, initially it was five percent.
Right.
For the first year, and I came to you and said, if I was fortunate...
Well, we hadn't proposed five percent. We were just looking at the numbers, and it turned out, right? You came to me and you said, hey, Rick, this is five percent, and I said, I agree with you.
You two guys were rerunning, I said, listen, I cannot, I cannot, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, reelected, I cannot look at a county employee and say, I gave myself a five percent increase and gave you some, gave you a three percent increase.
Right. We had pulled some numbers together, and we didn't realize that it was higher than the three percent.
Right. So I said, if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected, I think it should be in agreement with what the other people are receiving.
Right.
And you agreed with that statement, right?
Absolutely. So we changed it at that, so that's, that was what was voted on, and it turned out, so you take seventy-nine, you take three percent, it was eighty-three. You take three percent, three percent, three percent.
Rick, I, I'll just, I'll say this from my, my point of view, and what I, when I've served on the Jersey Shore School Board, and that goes for past members of the counties that certainly served on school boards with things, we make, when we're sitting on a school board, we make just as important, as important decisions as what takes place in the county, and we get paid nothing, yet there's going to be a two, two thousand dollar increase per year. Us social security people, we don't even see that kind of money.
I know. Look, you can always, for people in our county who, who are trying to live on thirty thousand or thirty-five or forty thousand, it seems like the commissioners are overpaid.
I didn't say that.
No, 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 I'm not saying, you said that. I'm saying that this is sometimes the way people feel. And, and it's, it's hard to, to sort of get people to understand that that's sort of a separate situation than what we are, what we try to do, which is you try to... the people doing, doing the work. And you're right, John, school board members are not paid at all. Maybe we should. Maybe we should, no, I mean, I'm serious. Maybe we should, and then maybe have, have people, but, but if you start doing that, you get down a path of cost. People do it for service, and I get that, and I thank the people who do it. And in some ways, it's a thankless job, because inevitably you have to raise taxes in the school zone, so. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, but thank you.
I, I, no, but in all seriousness, I hope the taxpayers feel that they get their money's worth from us, and I, I sure maybe one of my...
I've had people in the public say, you should be making more.
Yeah.
I've had people say that to me.
A lot.
A lot more, and I, listen, I'm not in this job to get rich. I'm in this job to serve the public. It's a full-time position. It's a full-time position, I said it over and over every time, every day. Every one of these positions that are elected, the sheriff, the comptroller, the treasurer, the pathanitary, the Dave...
Registry recorder.
Registry recorder. They're full-time positions. They're here on weekends. I see their cars out here. They go to meetings at night. We go to meetings on weekends.
It never stops.
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. We're overseeing a hundred and thirty million dollar budget. We're overseeing...
Forty million dollar children and youth.
Forty million dollar children and youth. We're overseeing five hundred plus employees. You don't do that ten hours a week.
Well, Scott, here's my...
So that's all I'm going to say, John.
No, here's what I want to say, not to argue.
I'm not arguing with you.
No, no. You know, you ran for it, but there's, it's the same, it's the same by a Democrat, it's one of my favorite people, Harry Truman. If you can't stand the heat in the kitchen, then it's time to get out. I had, you know, so you ran for it and knew what you were getting into. Thank you.
All right, just so you realize, no, John, don't, I don't think Scott's saying he, or Commissioner Metzger's saying he can't handle it. I don't think anybody's saying we can't handle the heat.
No, no, I've just...
No, no, I understand. So something that the public should understand is that when you're in elected office, you may not be, which is a little different from a, a full-time job, you may not be here, you know, from eight to five every day, but you're engaged in ways, whether you're out in the community, which is really part of what you should be doing, is finding out what's going on in the community, talking to people, going places, seeing things, going to Eagle Scout events on the weekends, and going to the Grange at night and doing that. That's how you sort of get your handle on the pulse of what's going on in the community and helps you in decision-making about whether or not a particular expenditure of funds will help advance a community. And so we may not sit in a desk like you do, and, and in a, in a straight job, I call it a straight job, in a straight job, you go home at five o'clock and, you know, your day is over. Now, you might be in a salaried position, such as the director, where you're sort of on twenty-four seven, where, where, you know, an emergency happens, you're getting beeped by the sheriff, or you're getting beeped by a department head or whatever, and, and then makes a decision, okay, do I need to also include the commissioners on this, and, or is this something that I just, you know, handle on my own? And I have to give credit to Matt that most of the time he handles it on his own. And, but, but so the public understands that, and it, and that's why, you know, when you look at this collective bargaining contract that we signed for the APO officers, there's an on-call pay.
You and I always disagree with that.
No, I know. I don't, I want to bring it up because I don't want to, but I want people to understand it's a three hundred fifty dollar on-call pay, because when that adult probation officer takes on-call for that week, they can't leave their house, they can't even have a beer.
Hogwash.
They can't, they can't, you know, go and, their freedom of movement is restricted.
They're also public servants.
Yeah, they are. That's how we compensate them in the, in the collective bargaining agreement. So I hope that the public, I understand John's frustration, and I understand John's concern. It's, there's no perfect world, right? But we, if we can look in the mirror with a straight face and say, hey, you know what? I'm, I'm not, I'm giving the people my best, I'm not, you know, doing wrong, I'm doing, I'm doing the best we can do. I don't think it's, I'm wrong to come.
We run for these positions because we care about the county, we care about, that's why we do what we do. It's a full-time position, so we should be properly compensated, which I feel we are, and that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. I'm jumping out of frying pan in a pool of water.
And it is a, you know, there's a lot of work involved, and that's fine. We're up for the challenge, and we're going to get criticized, and that's okay too. You criticize everything you do in life, so it's fine. So a public comment?
Public comment.
Yep. Again, please keep it to county issues.
Okay. Bible verse, is it okay? Because it affects our county.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I spoke to you in your prosperity, but you said, I will not listen. This has been your practice from your youth, that you have not obeyed my voice. This is Jeremiah twenty-two, twenty-one. And I think that's a bigger reason why we are where we are with a lot of problems. And of course, you know, I belong to a group that's not partisan, you're open to anyone who wants to join, just to hopefully better the community and the country and the state. But I do see people are too anxious, I think. They want things to turn around overnight, and it's not going to happen, because we've allowed these things to come on us. I look back on, when I was younger, I can't believe I was the way I was. I ignored a lot of God's teaching, you know, and I wonder why I'm divorced, you know, and it's shameful to me, and, and then I could go through my whole life. But, you know, we all have, I know I have responsibility, and the only reason I speak like this is to hopefully get people to think and maybe change their ways and look at themselves and, and really have a, maybe a real mourning for our nation. Past presidents and leaders in our country, especially further back we go, call for days of national mourning and prayer and fasting. Kind of hope we would do that again, but anyway, I think it's great that you guys were over at the holding facility, you know, answered a lot of questions.
Processing facility.
Processing, yeah. Okay, sorry about that.
That's what they call it.
I wrote it down on my notes, so I didn't get it.
That's what it is. I mean, you're, you're there for up to twelve hours.
Yeah. And, but this company out of Boston, right? The, what's the name of that?
Arc Terrors.
Arc Terrors, yeah, I'm sorry. Do, do you have a lot of background on them, or are they...
I've... I've done a little bit of research on them, and there's, there's a whole, and public should go into Google and look up investments in, in federal opportunity zones, you know, and in first lost capital, you know, this, so the way first lost capital works is that the, the other investors who tend to be very wealthy people, right, so you have, let's say you have a net worth of a hundred million dollars, and you have money that you want to invest, and you want to minimize your federal taxes, you invest it in a, in a, in an entity, a fund like this, they get their money back, they get a six percent return, their management fees they charge.
Right.
And then they pay us interest.
Twenty percent equity.
Twenty percent, yeah.
Immediately.
So, the question is, and I don't know if you, if you were asking a question, but the question is, is, is it important, more important for us to draw twenty million dollars of capital, because the other five million is our own money, right? To draw twenty million into our community that we might not otherwise have?
Right.
So one of the issues in rural development or urban development is how do you attract investment capital?
Mm-hmm.
Right, how do you, a guy like Digger came here, invested about eleven million dollars from Indiana, bought land from the county, borrowed money from the bank, set up a factory, and, you know, is creating jobs and so forth, maybe, I don't know if it was eleven million, maybe nine million. The guys at the mall are going to be investing money, now, we've given them a little impetus by loaning them at a low, you know, three percent rate.
Right.
Right? But these federal opportunity zones, if you look at them, they're in areas where capital doesn't flow.
Yeah.
There's no capital flowing in there.
Right.
So how do you get capital to flow into these areas? Is it, and listen, this is something we should talk about, because is it better for us to just take the five million and go to some local people that we know who are investors and say, listen, and not first lost capital, we'll put up five million dollars, all four entities, you guys put up ten million, we'll loan the money to you, and we get our money back, the way we protect it is at the mall.
All right.
So this is, yeah.
When government gets involved, the price tag goes up.
Yep.
And that's, that's the bottom line.
That's true.
And no matter what it is, and when I, when I see, when government's creating opportunity zones, and I, I understand the principles behind it all, right? But it's so unaffordable, and you know, you want to talk about equalization of taxes, you find more loopholes on how to get the rich richer, right? That's, that's what's happening, okay? And it's only the rich that are going to be able to afford it, and now the rich are coming to us and saying, hey, give me twenty percent, right? And I'm sitting here going, that's a second here, you know? Why don't we deal with the rules, the regulations, why don't we try to streamline them, make things more efficient, make people want to, like Digger, come in here and not ask for really anything, it was, it was, was a pretty good job. And, and let the widgets be widgets, and if you're successful, you make, you know, everybody's counting on government way too much in the past decade, and that trend needs to stop, it just needs to stop. Get back to what we're supposed to be doing.
Yep.
So, you know, the other day, a gentleman in the community who's very successful, and he said to me, you know, I said, what do you think? I ran into him, and this is what I mean as a commissioner, right, I ran to him and we were talking, and he said, I said, well, what do you think about this Arc-Terras? And he said, well, he said, I'm concerned that we need to do something here because, you know, between the loss of population and the economic, to jumpstart the economic engine, so it's, it's a, it's a tough call, I mean, I think Commissioner Musser makes, makes some good points, and the other thing, I wonder if we are not on the uptick, you know, and that if I'm a first, you know, if I'm in a, in a fund like this, I look at communities where I think the pendulum is swinging up.
Yeah.
Because my, obviously, they don't want to lose their twenty million dollars, right? They're not just going to go willy-nilly, invest in someplace, so I wonder whether it's necessary, would it be nice for us to get the twenty million? Absolutely. I'm wondering whether there isn't also some activity we can generate on our own, we've done pretty good on, on stimulating some economic development.
Property taxes are a lot less here than they are in Philadelphia, but these companies aren't, they're not, they don't care about the property tax, they think it's cheap anyway, that's not, that's not why they're here. Matt makes a good, Matt makes a good point, that in other areas, this company, but where you're putting in five, we'd be putting in five million collectively, and they'd be voting in twenty, gives you twenty-five million dollars, and that, that's probably base, because in other communities, they've spurred double and triple that.
Yeah, that's really important.
It's just the first stepping stone.
Yeah.
Of future development, because you, you see it, if you build it, they come, that's what happens.
Right.
And we, maybe we need that, and some people argue, no, we don't.
No, that's, that's the flip side of it, that if we do do this, we'll, we'll stimulate other investment and fill in, and that's where I think people are thinking. So, we're asking for the public's input, I, I don't think we've, we've obviously made a decision to continue exploring it.
Sure.
And we're going to do that. You know, sometimes you have to take risks, and, 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 you know, we take a risk, and it's not like we would be risking tax money, we would be putting Act thirteen or something into it, right? We wouldn't be taking payroll taxes. I mean, not payroll.
Thank you, Tom.
Sure, I kind of asked some with the Arc-Terras, would they, would they be able to influence any airline activity come back into the airport?
It's not in a zone.
No, I know, but I know they, they're kind of.
Good.
Yeah, depends what they bring, you're.
They don't know what they're doing.
Could help, yeah.
I mean, as an entity, it's still, but, so with the, with that drums alive?
Yes.
I'd have to wear workout clothes, would you?
No, no, unless you want to work out with them.
I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, maybe they can take it earlier than fair.
That's good, yeah.
Anybody else?
I've got one online.
Yes.
From EMD, is it true that Lycoming County is technically a sanctuary county under the law? Answer is no.
We thank everybody for joining us this morning, and complete our agendas, we'll be adjourned, our next meeting will be July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, ten a.m. right here in this meeting room. Thank you.
How you doing?
People play, oh, you know, my girl, and I just, you know, like, I heard that at the, I'm not doing it for money, I think it's more, I think it's more.
Don't come to me.
Well, there's nothing wrong with being paid, people shouldn't.
How you doing, brother?
I think you made a very vital mistake.
You know, isn't it, it's an initiative.
Oh, yeah.
I would never call you a full-time.
Hey.
You probably said you're forty hours a week.
I didn't know it was a paid job.
I know, all three of you gentlemen. Not to know that you put in.
I didn't know it was a mission.
Affirmance.
So when they write it, I was like.
Take your time, we'll see you.
No, be mine.
Thanks, Cassie.
Have a good, I'm like, you know, like, in the, you are, you're there, you can't stop, and have to wait more for favors.
But I don't think people should apologize for being paid for something.
Correct.
And I don't think that, I've never felt like I'm going to apologize for what I'm getting paid, because I think that if people don't think I'm doing a proper job.
I agree.
And, 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 you know, there, there will, especially as people face more struggles of trying to pay their bills.
So, I have to say, I'm glad I say this, is to put on, planning is, we, what's the name of it? So, they're coming down next Thursday, it's going to be at the church, I can send it to you. Yeah, I should do it.
What's that agenda?
Um, they are, um, trying to have the ERA read about, hello.
How are you doing?
I'm good, and they're going to be here on the twentieth, a new covenant, and they're